The Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting should come to order. Roll call, Mrs. Shavs.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Chairman DeMello, present. First up, we have bills payable for FY 25 in the amount of $636,518.26. What are the wishes of the committee, please?
Motion to approve in the amount stated.
Seconded.
Second on discussion, so just a quick, on page two, Mrs. Monahan. Hold on, do I get the right one? Yes, I do. Page two, on the Base State Interpreters, okay, ELL. You know what, I read Base State, the, no, the sewage, yeah, my eyes are playing tricks on me. No questions. Motion was seconded, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Shavs.
Sorry, I had a couple of questions. I'm assuming that a lot of this, a lot of these things are subscriptions that are renewed right now? Okay, because I had looked at, some of them looked like a little pricey, like paraphrase for $19,000 on page nine, and I knew Perrin Square. So are those yearly subscription rates that are given now, it's not, we don't pay it throughout the year?
Correct. Usually what we do is, some of them will have a yearly rate, or some of them we will be able to purchase ahead of time for a three-year rate, but we always pay them once a year. So this is usually very heavy with these big-ticket items.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Next up, we have the FY 24 bills payable in the amount of $10,248.
Motion to approve in the amount of $10,248.
Seconded.
On discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, we are adjourned, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us, I call the meeting to order, if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will lead us in the invocation.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we're also asking for a moment of silence this evening for the shooting that took place in Georgia today at a school. And oddly enough, we're having a school safety and security presentation, and it's sad to think that these things are still happening in this country. So for the people that lost their lives, I understand, the last I heard there were four, and there's several people in the hospital. And for those of them in the hospital, can we please say a prayer so that their families may be comforted during this difficult time? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay, next we have approval of the minutes. Oh, thank you, Mrs. Fagan, roll call, please.
Mr. Enes.
Present.
Mrs. Shavs.
Present.
Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Ms. Santos.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
And on camera, Mr. Laura.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present, thank you. Now we have approval of the minutes from August 21, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes from the August 21st meeting, 2024.
Motion in second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
None opposed, so voted? There is no Student Advisory Committee report this evening? Is there any public input this evening? No, no public input this evening. We will go to E, which is the School Security Update, and we have some special guests with us this evening for that. And I think it will be started by Stephanie Hoy, Director of Student Services and Transportation.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. Thank you to School Committee for once again inviting us up to talk about school safety, a very important topic. I am here today and accompanied by some really special people. You've probably heard me say this before, and it won't be the last time you hear me say, but Taunton is very unique. We have an incredible relationship with our Taunton Police Department, and I rely on them constantly, create an incredible SRO program that's overseen by Lieutenant Jackson and Captain Nichols. So some of our SROs are here today, and I know that Captain Nichols will be introducing them shortly. We're also here with Kevin Hamm and Todd Castro, and we're going to talk to you about a special project that we have excitedly just finished, although it's probably been a little over a year in the making. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Captain Nichols, who will speak a little bit about the project, and then we'll go into the PowerPoint in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. So, school safety, school safety is obviously very important to us here in the school, in the city of Taunton. We've just started many, many years ago when we started the school safety, and it's just progressed from there. The thing to remember about school safety is it's important that we continually to move forward. We always looking for different projects, always looking for different things to improve our school safety and security, and to improve things that we can identify, some of these projects identify some of our weaknesses, and our weaknesses can always be worked on. So we're always looking at it from a standpoint of improvement. So, without any further ado, I'll introduce, this is Kevin Hamm from Serpide, and Todd Castro at the time worked for Serpide, but he's now the Emergency Management Director here in the city of Taunton. We kind of poached him from Serpide, probably partly food of this project, but thank you. But they started this project in, the first school district was down in, Old Rochester School Department brought it in. So Serpide had this plan to bring in, they're obviously experts in planning. They brought this project in to basically redo all the schools in 3D mapping. So basically, it's an active shooter and hostile event response toolkit. They brought in all their equipment, they showed us the program that they did in Old Rochester, and I said, hey, that would be awesome in Taunton, right? So this would improve our safety and security in Taunton. This would make, take our old maps that we have on our Crisis Go, just the basic old-school, you know, 1D printed maps, and now create a different way to walk, to move around the schools in 3D. You can actually physically take these and move around the school in 3D, as you'll be able to check it out later. The reason this improves security is now we have an updated map. There's all kind of links on here for fire safety. So we sat, and I brought this program to Stephanie, and Stephanie Hoy said, this is a great program. So then we all brought it to Superintendent Cabral, and everybody said, this is a great program. So we had many, many planned meetings with the Fire Department, I know the Fire Chief was here, the Fire Chief, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the School Department, even the Building Department. Everybody was involved in this planning process. And we brought everybody in, we said, all right, what's important for you to have on the map? Because importance for us was like hyperlinking cameras, and having hallways, and be able to look at things that we have to go into for security reasons. And then the Fire Department was important to have all the standpipe and all the different things, to mark all where all the fire extinguishers are, all the different things that we can mark. And then everybody else, the Fire, the School, the Building Department got to weigh in on something they might have to turn off, some electrical stuff and things of that. So we did that. So then, we didn't think we realized how really improved the program was going to be until Kevin stepped in with Todd, and they started to actually map the schools. And if you've not seen this before, basically, it's a 3D model of all of our schools. It's very, very high resolution. We can now walk around the schools even from a cellphone. You can scan the QR code, go through the school. So what does that do for us? It integrates our security. So if we have to respond to a school, the dispatches can look at this, the response officers can look at this. We can look into what a classroom looks like. So now we're not going around blind corners looking at different things. We can hyperlink the cameras, now we can see in real time and lifetime what the actual problem is. And I know everybody's thinking, because the program's called Active Shooter and Hostile Event, but when we approach school safety, we really approach it, that's the greatest thing that we have to worry about, right? As Mrs. Fagan said today, what happened in Georgia this morning. However, this also improves of our, all types of response for the Fire Department. We have medical emergencies in the schools every day, that's an everyday occurrence that we can improve. Now the Fire Department can look at where they're going, where is the emergency? Is it a structured problem, is it different types of things? We also use this on the planning side. If you've been to the graduation the last two years, the graduations here can be kind of hectic. But we've used some of these planning tools to do the graduations, to better look at what we can do. How do we control people coming in and out? And I think it's been a lot better the last two years in the graduation. So this is a very widespread program that we can use it for. I don't think we've even touched the surface of what we're going to use it in the future when we start to use integration and different AI things in the police world. But I think Todd and Kevin, if you want to say a couple of things about it that I probably missed.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for letting me come and speak, and thanks for helping me do this entire project. The real key here, Eric had a lot of the big points, but the idea is that the first 10, 20, 30 minutes of a response, whether it's active shooter or medical, are chaos. And we're never going to get chaos to zero, but this tool will help bring some order to that. If it helps an officer realize, I've got 10 doors on this building, I know they're all numbered, I need 10 officers, one at each door. If it helps somebody realize, oh, I can land a helicopter on that field, so I don't want to put anyone else over there if I have to use MedFlight. All those little decisions, if it helps the Fire Department realize that the alarm panel's over there, the Knox box with the keys is over there. Just take some of those easy decisions off of their plate so they can focus on the hard parts of the, of a response. That's really all we wanted to do. And as Eric mentioned, obviously, there's a lot of uses for all sorts of things, and I hope this thing is a living document going forward. And we're just really here to support you guys going forward, whether that's with exercising this, planning for graduation, all those kinds of things. You know, if this sits on a shelf and gathers dust, then I think we've all, we've all kind of failed at our jobs. If this is used every day, every week, every month, that kind of thing, people get to know it, really, really use the tool, then it'll be a success, and hopefully we can save some lives and be safer at it. Happy to answer any questions, if folks have questions, or stick around after if people want to see something or have specific questions. Otherwise, I'm just really glad it's all rolled out, and you guys have your final documents.
Thank you.
Todd, did you want to add anything?
Just wanted to briefly say that this has been a truly a collaborative effort. And I want to thank Mayor O'Connell for your support, Chief Walsh, Chief Levine, and the School Department, the Building Department, Captain Nichols. This has been a fantastic program that I think will truly benefit public safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, and it sounds like Kevin will hang out a little bit later in case anyone has more specific questions that they'd like to ask. So back to our PowerPoint. Just want to update some of our school safety practices, some that you're familiar with and some that may not necessarily be familiar to you as of yet. So we obviously do our safety drills. All our staff are fobbed, or getting fobs, so that they make sure that we use our ID and fobs to access our buildings. We have what's called the Raptor system in all our schools that are being utilized. Raptor is, if you're coming in to either dismiss, or coming in for any reason, you show your ID, it goes into a machine, and up comes any type of warnings that we should know about the person that's coming into the building. That is utilized at every school, and we actually have a dashboard that tells us what the use is at every school, so we can monitor the usage of the Raptor machine. One, another really exciting new thing that we started is two-way emergency radios in all our schools. So each one of our schools, including extended-day offices, as well as Taunton Police Headquarters and Dispatch, all have a base radio. This radio is a radio that connects to Taunton Police Headquarters to Dispatch directly from a school. Principals have the same slim walkie-talkie that offers them the same benefit. So let's say there was some level of an emergency here at Elizabeth Pole School. The base radio is located in the office, of course, Principal Jones walks around with it on a daily basis as well, the handheld. And you'd get onto the base radio, and you would say, state the emergency, there's an emergency at Elizabeth Pole. Directly goes right to the Headquarters of Police, it goes right to Dispatch, but it also, you can hear it at every single school. So now every school knows, there's an emergency going on at Elizabeth Pole. And also, our police, it's just one way of communicating with our police. I can say that there was one particular school last year that used it for a medical emergency. It was just the first thing that they could get their hands on, and they used it really quick, and the response time was within seconds. So that has also offered us another opportunity to basically communicate with our Police Department other than our 911 calls, but it's direct communication. We tested every Tuesday morning at 9:30, starting here at the Elizabeth Pole with Base, and we go through every single school to make sure it's in operation so that if there was a real emergency, we know it would be working. So that's also some new and exciting information that we started. You may have heard a little bit about Crisis Go, we've been using it for a few years now. Every drill that we do for a lockdown drill, we initiate a Crisis Go. So Crisis Go is an app that is on everyone's desktop. People can download it on their phone, that's completely optional, and it's a way for us to notify the police that we are in an emergency. It also is able to do two-way communication to the people in that group. So again, using Elizabeth Pole as an example. If a teacher just said, there's an intruder here, I'm going to press Crisis Go. They press Crisis Go, that entire Elizabeth Pole staff gets a communication that there should be a lockdown at that moment. The Superintendent's Office also gets that direct message, and then the Taunton Police gets the direct message that Elizabeth Pole is currently in a lockdown situation. Again, one other way of communicating. There's also a way of communicating to teachers directly through the Crisis Go app, so if you needed to evacuate a certain part of the building, or if you needed to evacuate certain classrooms, and you needed to find a location of where you're evacuating, that all can be done by pushing one button and being able to communicate through the Crisis Go app. This past year, we also purchased Crisis Go buttons. So every school has Crisis Go buttons, more than just one, depending on the size of your building. Principals were given the opportunity to work with their SROs and to identify where those Crisis buttons should go. The Crisis button, button works exactly like the app works, with the exception of you don't have to open up as many windows. So if there is some level of emergency, they would press the button, the button's already identified at Elizabeth Pole School, and you would get the same type of interaction that you do with the Crisis Go app through the button. It's just a quicker way of engaging emergency response teams. You heard me last year talk a little bit about the emergency operation plans. I did drop just a few on your table, if you want to take a look. Those emergency operation plans were completed in conjunction and collaboration with our Taunton Police Department, our Fire Department, and they've all been updated. The smaller version of them are located in every classroom in our district, and it literally goes step by step. Some of them have flow charts, the larger ones have flow charts for our building administrators that basically go through every emergency planning that we need for many different scenarios. So that here is just a list of the emergency operation plan scenarios and incidences that are located in the book, but you have it in front of you too, if you want to peruse through it. We also started with more security guards at Taunton High School, so we actually were able to hire with ESA funding, and then thank you for your support. We were able to keep those security guards in place. So we also have an increased number of security guards. And of course, I can't, I'd be remiss if I wasn't going to mention our SROs. We have four SROs, and three of them are with us today, one is actually from BP, so I guess we're five in total. I'll ask Captain Nichols to come back up and introduce his team.
So here today is the direct supervisor for the SRO program, Lieutenant Glenn Jackson. Glenn's here. School Resource Officer Casey Holmes. Casey's primary responsibility is the middle schools. School Resource Officer Brian Shaws. Brian is assigned to Taunton High School. And School Resource Officer Jason LaPlante. He's assigned right currently to Bristol Plymouth. School Resource Officer Leo Almeida's not here tonight, and the only reason he's not here is he just had his first child a few days ago. So, yes, so. Say thank you, Leo, I don't know if he's watching, but everybody, welcome all of us to the new world. So, he had a young all of us, so. These guys are the day-to-day, every day, so.
They are all, I have to say, the amount of, I think it's important to note, and I'm sure Captain Nichols might want to mention this too, there's such a, there's a difference between our school police and school SROs. So our SROs here in Taunton, their main purpose is school safety and relationships with kids. I could tell you stories about our SROs and the dynamic relationships that they have with children, and I'm sure it would bring a tear to your eye, but they are incredible with making those relationships with kids that may not necessarily have a lot of relationships with other adults. So having them is pivotal for not only our safety, but also the emotional growth of our kids. So I just want to say how much I appreciate all of them, because I really do. So, annual safety drills is something we do consistently every year. So right now, we're doing fire drills. You'll hear us do three lockdown drills a year. We've really have grown, as far as our lockdown drills are concerned. This year, we'll probably be doing an evacuation drill too, just so that our teachers, our staff, our kids know exactly where to go in case there wasn't an emergency where they needed to evacuate their buildings. And of course, our bus evacuations, because you can't forget that. It's just important for us to practice bus safety, and that anything can happen at any point in time. I'll ask Officer Nichols to talk, Captain Nichols to talk a little bit about emergency operation planning and trainings.
So recently, as we redid all the emergency plans, a project that Stephanie headed up, basically. So when we looked at that, we realized there was one deficiency. The one deficiency is, these plans are all developed in what's called the ICS world, Incident Command System. Incident Command System is a general command system that's used to every police and fire department in the entire country. It's very well-trained in us, and as you go up in rank, you train at a higher level of command. What we realized is, our school administrators, our principals, our APs, our school administration staff had never had any of that type of training. They've had much more training than us on the education side, but on the actual emergency response side, they lacked that. So what we did was, we collaborated again, and last year we brought in for the first time all the APs and all the principals into an ICS 100 classes, the basic Incident Command class. So now they kind of understood what their role is, what the role of the Fire Department, what the role of the Police Department is in an actual emergency. So that was the first step of this program. The second step of doing these emergency plans, we've now developed, with the partners that we worked with, with Preparedness LLC, all kind of tabletop exercises. So basically, a tabletop exercise is something we use in the police world all the time. It's a very quick way to do training. We can sit down, and we can put a scenario in front of people at a table. We don't have to act it out, it's very short-term. And then we can say, what would you do, what is your responsibility? So everybody's very clear-cut, defined roles. Everybody understands what their responsibilities are when it comes down to an active, you know, chaos-type emergency situation, and God forbid, like an active shooter or something like that. Everybody knows what to do. But these operation plans go from anything medical. Again, medical emergencies happen every day, so how do we better do that? When we did some of these plans, I know, I think Todd picked it up on a few times, we did these plans, and we identified some of the doors we had numbered were wrong, just because we've picked this up with the stuff, so we improved on that. So that's the next step of this, is to have all these roundtable discussions and roundtable trainings, and there's a lot of benefit of training from that. And again, it's just one more step, so.
So every, every school year, principals identify an emergency response team out of their building. This year, we were able to secure a grant of $60,000 that's going to help us train our staff, our emergency response teams, so that not only are they doing tabletop exercise, and they know exactly how to follow our protocols as far as emergency operation planning, and the books in front of you, but they can also take that with their principals and break them up into staff meetings, and also discuss what they are learning in our training. So I'm excited that we were granted that opportunity for having a funding source that's actually going to support the training of emergency response teams, which is very important. So, technology, all our, you'll notice that if you walk through E-Pole, you'll notice that there's a lot more cameras in the hallways lately, and that's because our tech department has been doing a really wonderful job increasing the cameras within our building. So cameras within and outside our building, at the middle school level. And speaking to Jennifer Ashley, our technology director, she feels secure in saying that there are very little areas that are not on camera at both the middle and at Taunton High School, where we need to focus our next steps are at the elementary levels. Although we've increased the camera footage, we still have some work to do at the elementary level. Our cameras are also a very, as far as being digitalized and being able to view them with high definition. We use them all the time, I know our SROs use them for any type of situation that has come up. Principals use them for monitoring safety or any concerns that they may have. So, and Jennifer Ashley has been working in conjunction with my department and all our principals to make sure that we have all cameras that are in operation. And if there is an area that is of concern, she's happy to discuss that with us and add the cameras. So I must say, over the past year, we really have increased our cameras quite a great deal. Also, when we, as you know, when we come in, you should be greeted by your person opening the door as stating your name, making sure you're telling everybody why they're there, and they check that, and make sure that you're coming right into the, into the office. And we want to make sure that you're always looking at the camera that's outside. So these are just everyday things that we're doing, but we're asking our principals to hold people accountable to make sure that we're using those cameras on a daily basis to identify people, not only by voice or by them greeting them, but also using the cameras to make sure that visibly there's nothing that seems unusual about the person standing in front of the camera that's about to enter our buildings. Some future considerations and planning, so school safety is continuously ongoing, especially with AI and lots of other things coming up, there's always improvements. So these are just some future considerations. So we have started the vestibule process, as you can see here at Elizabeth Pole. Parker School also has it. We're currently, right now, working with architects to design other vestibules in other schools. So you'll probably be seeing a lot more vestibules in the future as you visit our buildings. We understand the importance of making sure that all our schools have vestibules. The other school that has a form, an informal vestibule, but it is, is Taunton High School. When you walk in now to Taunton High, those doors up on top are all mechanically closed. You can't get in, you have to be buzzed in. So we've done, it's more of a secure location, so we are really looking at making sure that when people are coming into our buildings, they're in a vestibule, we're screening them appropriately before they're coming in. So we are also looking to restructure Taunton High School and the security booth that we have there. There are some up-to-date things that we want to do to make sure our security guards have everything that they need to feel safe and welcome people into the building. We talked about the emergency response team trainings. We talked about adding more security cameras. And our technology department is also working with the Taunton Police Department in order to secure school camera footage too, for our police department to be able to enter our cameras and actually view cameras live onsite at schools. And of course, they are also, our IT department's also updating them on cybersecurity, because that's also a big topic, and making sure that we are practicing the latest in cybersecurity. So those were just a few things. We've had a lot of real excitement with many new things with safety and security, primarily the active shooter and hostile mapping, the 3D mapping. We also wanted to emphasize the Crisis Go buttons, that were something that we've been working really diligently with. And then we'll continue to work with our Police Department, our Fire Department, to make sure that we are collaborating and updating our emergency operation plans as they feel fit. Thank you. We can take any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. That was a great presentation, and it's so important to all of us here and to the parents at home to know all of the precautions that are being taken, taken. And, you know, the technology, the integration, the communication, the partnerships. We're really grateful for everything that everyone does. And I think we're very fortunate to have that here in the city of Taunton. We really seem, you know, to be very proactive in everything that you guys are doing. And I think it's very impressive, the plans you have, the safety, emergency procedures at a glance. It's a wonderful thing here in the city for our kids, for our parents, and we're, you know, pleased that you were all able to come in today. And the relationships that the SROs have with the kids, we do, we hear about that all the time. And the deep connections and making kids want to come to school. And the, the deep connections and making kids want to come to school and be here. It just, it means a real lot to the kids and the parents. And I will tell you that even if you have an appointment at a school to maybe go read to kids or something, they are checking. You know, they're checking who you are, and, you know, if you say who you are, making you sign in the books. So I've experienced that, and I'm sure a lot of you on school committee have as well. So anyway, thanks for everyone coming in tonight. Thanks for all the work you're doing. And I will open it up to school committee if they have any comments or questions. So excellent. Dr. Demond?
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, absolutely. I commend the entire partnership that's going on within our schools. Of course, the safety of our students, our staff is paramount, and feel very comfortable that we're in great, great hands. The 3D imaging, when I scanned my phone earlier, is this public information? I mean, does, it's not like...
So we're not necessarily releasing it to the public at this time. But most of the information on there, almost all of it, other than an active hyperlink camera, we're not gonna release it necessarily to the public right now. But we can modify versions of it that can be released to the public if we so choose in the future. It's a base program right now, we can build off it. And we've even talked about possibly building out one from this that we could actually have for like teacher orientation. They could actually walk around, or maybe eighth-grade orientation at the high school. Because again, if you're talking about generational, again, you know, I'm a little bit older in the group. Maybe I don't do everything on my phone, but Brian, stand up. So I'm gonna pick on Brian for a minute, because only because he's, I think you're younger than Casey, right? So your youngest SRO, again, Brian's generation, and then the generation behind Brian that's in high school right now, is definitely more, he's a lot better with this technology than I would be, right? So that's what we have to forecast, and that's why we're doing programs like this. What are we forecasting in the future of what is actually usable to people in the future, not just us dinosaurs now?
As a follow-up, would it warrant to share this at a, at a public display with our students to show them, hey, listen, we know every nook and cranny of every building, so don't do anything stupid or, you know, because we're gonna find you, you know what I mean? I mean, giving them that advance notice that there's nothing unseen. So maybe that's a good recommendation. And just to talk about our SROs, I know that when Mrs. Fagan and I go to the football and basketball game, she always bums a ride for me because she's too cheap for gas. But we, we are always, we are always seeing the presence of the SROs and interaction with the students, whether they're the basketball, football players, parents, other students. It's just amazing, you know, that they're all part of the same family. They're not looked upon as a police officer, they're looked at as a fellow colleague or someone that they're gonna look up to and appreciate that they're there. So thank you to our SROs. And Jason LaPlante, whenever you wanna come back, we're, we're ready for you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all your work.
Superintendent?
So I'll be brief in my comments. So one, I just wanna commend the school committee again for approving this recommendation from the administration to authorize us to use one-time funding from the federal government to complete this project. And Stephanie Hoy, when she was appointed to the position, was told that she was gonna be the Director of Student Services, and that 90% of her job would focus on student services. However, as you can tell, a large percentage of her time is spent on, you know, the safety of our buildings and working and developing these very thoughtful and meaningful relationships with our police department, our fire department, and all our first responders. And as you know, in many communities, that's not the case. So I feel very blessed as a superintendent to have the relationship that Stephanie has fostered with our first responders. And I really do appreciate the fact that they have brought the neighborhood policing model into our schools, because that's where you see the relationships with our, with our kids. And I just will share with the school committee, our next school committee retreat is gonna be January 29th. And January 29th's gonna focus on school safety. We'll, we'll hold it in executive session, so you can really see, get to see behind the scenes what a first response look, looks like in a school, similar to what we did six years ago. So again, we will model that with the police department and also provide you with the training. You spend a lot of time in our schools, so you need to know as well, you know, what are some of the procedures when someone calls. So that'll be the emphasis on our January 29th retreat. So I commend the committee, and I commend our staff, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan on the facility side, Mr. Barata, Mark Freitas. You know, it really was a, a community that came together. And we're just scratching the surface, because we wanna do more. We wanna make sure that we have the safest and most up-to-date plans for our students and for our community. So thank you.
Well, I will just add, Superintendent, it does start at the top, so your leadership has also been instrumental in us getting to where we are now. All right, anything else?
Yeah, I'm gonna end with three little things. I promise this short. So first thing, of all these things that you heard tonight, there's only one thing that starts totally required, and that's a fire drill. None of this is mandatory. This is all voluntary by the school, the school district, all voluntary. Without the support from the mayor's office, obviously, all the way down to the superintendent's office, and all the way down to us, police officers, and through Stephanie, none of this is mandatory. That's, that's the biggest thing to remember, it's all voluntary. So everything that we're doing is voluntary. We've tried four times or five times, somebody's brought a bill in front of Beacon, Beacon Hill to try to make lockdown drills or safety drills mandatory as a fire department, and it's never made it through for some reason. But again, it doesn't matter, we still do it. The second thing is, Todd's gonna pass out a quick sheet. Just out of curiosity, coming here tonight, I ran some numbers, and I guess this is me bragging about the SROs a little bit. When you look at our program, if you look at the SROs, but then if you look at their program as opposed to school police, it's a difference, right? School police are there as traditional police officers. They are not acting as traditional police officers. They're by statutory, by statute, cannot act as disciplinarians. That's why their relationships are so good with the students. So as a result of that, and I think a lot of it's got to do with the mental health system that we have in place in the district. We have the access center, we have the, the, just can go on and on, assessment, yeah. Can go on and on about the mental health resources available. When you put that all together, we arrested no students in this district last year. Zero. Zero. Yeah. I think that's amazing. And again, I'm bragging, because these gentlemen do a great job day in and day out, and they work really hard at that. They, but, so that's a tough number to quantify, because a zero is nothing, right? But how many incidences, how many arrests did they stop by interaction with students? You can't quantify the number of interactions they've had. We did a backpack drive last week, or two weeks ago, and we had had a hundred-foot ice cream sundae. Like, who, in my day, when I first started policing, and Lieutenant Jackson will tell you, we wouldn't have done a hundred-foot sundae, right? But this is what they're doing. So because of their work, because of their hard work, look at the numbers. The numbers are staggering. The only two arrests we made on school grounds had nothing to do with students. One was, you know, they're enumerated in here. But even the calls for service, I just kinda ran them up. But what doesn't show here is all the things that they stopped from happening. The students go in our SRO offices every day and said, hey, you know, you might wanna know about this. You might wanna know about that, you might wanna know about this. And sometimes it's just a student that's having a tough day, and maybe that student didn't eat today, is hungry. So they feed the student. So again, all this collaboration, it works. It absolutely works, and it's voluntary. But, so I, you know, thank the support. If you go to a lot of police departments, a lot of school departments, they don't work together. And very close to us, it's, they don't have this relationship. So that's the second thing, is, you know, kind of boasting about them. And then the third thing is a challenge for you. So I challenge you to take some of this information, this PowerPoint, and talk to your colleagues in other school departments. Talk to your school committee members, and find us stuff that they're doing that we're not. And then we'll do it. That's as simple as that. We wanna see what other people are doing that we may have not, we're not doing. And maybe it's a money reason, maybe it's not, but I don't think, we've rarely seen no roadblocks, that we always seem to get the money. And I think that's, you know, probably some creative spending on the mayor's office and the superintendent's office, but we seem to get it, because they know this is important, right? So that's my challenge to you. Go out and find something. So we meet again at that summit, and was it January?
January.
You have some ideas for us. Instead of us always having ideas for you.
And I must say, I think if we were to talk to staff, if you go into any of our abilities and talk to staff and speak of the, the things that we do have, I think majority of staff will say to you, they feel better knowing I have a crisis go bet button. I feel better knowing I have access to the app. I feel better knowing that my main office has a direct line to the police department at all times. So I do think that our staff, when they recognize all that we do have, do feel better that we are putting their safety and student safety first every day.
That's what we're trying to do, empower the staff. Empower the staff to make great decisions under pressure. And that's what we work out of, so that's my challenge to you.
Nice job, Captain.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mrs. Fagan?
I just have a quick question, a question, Officer Nichols. These, the, the material in this book really has to stay somewhat private, doesn't it?
In which, the, the, yes, right now, yes.
That's what I thought.
The version that you have is the full version, that should stay confidential.
Right, so we aren't gonna be taking these home and showing them to everybody. I, again, I think that's the way that we go with this.
Yeah, they're confidential.
Yeah, my concern with that is if somebody gets hold of something like this, somebody can always find a weakness somewhere.
We can just change the QR code.
I, I understand, but I, you know, given what happened today, when I, when I saw that, and lately, there's, every time you turn on the news, people are getting threatened all over the place. So I, I think people really have to be aware of, you know, how dangerous our society's become. And I, I wish people would get along a lot better than what they do. It's not that hard to be kind to other people, but it just seems today, everybody's at one another's throats. And I feel safer, I, I don't have any grandchildren in the district right now. I mean, mine are, are off and going to college or they live in other communities. But as a parent and having a lot of friends that have, have, you know, students in there and grandchildren, I feel really good when I see something like this. And I can say to people most assuredly that we're doing the best we can to make sure people stay safe. So I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you for keeping our kids safe, for caring so much about our kids, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Mayor, a motion to recess for five minutes would be in order. If someone wants to make a motion, recess, five minutes.
Can we get a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Us for five minutes.
Motion to second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted, thank you.
A motion be in order to return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Next up, we have I M F Superintendent's Report, the Governance Corps, School Board, Superintendents, and Schools Working Together by Davis Campbell and Michael Fulon. Superintendent?
Yep, so I think it's only appropriate, now that our kids are back in school, that the school committee is giving homework again. So we're gonna pick up with our book study, which is chapter five from the text, Governing and Coherence. And I think the first paragraph does a really nice job of summarizing what was the intent of the, of the chapter, which was what it means to be a unified school committee versus a uniformed school committee. And a uniformed school committee is not a committee where everyone thinks the same way or committee where members have the same style. Instead, it's about a school committee bringing together their different views on issues and working together towards a common goal grounded in a shared moral purpose. So with that, I'll just leave it for discussion. If any board members wanna either one, utilize the questions that were provided through the book study, or just discuss their thoughts and feelings regarding the book study and what their takeaways were.
Mrs. Fagan, would you like to start? Mrs. Fagan, please. I know you were, you told me this morning, yes, you told me. Please. Wanna turn on your...
Sorry. You know, that, that's... Okay. So some of that stuff, to me, was, that's a little bit over the top. You know, you can just say so-and-so said this or that, but when you start assigning things, you start to wonder if... That's their opinion, it might not be everybody, because I don't know if everybody thinks we're all brilliant all of the time, but a lot of us try to be. But I thought there was just a lot of things about when people get on boards too, and they talk about people that are one-issue people, and that doesn't get you anywhere, because when, when you go after one thing, that's, it's hard to get that, you know, get away from that focus. I also thought it was good too about people that, oh, this was interesting. Trustees' professional experience does not provide licenses to insert themselves into the operation of the district. I've seen that happen before too, that you just, wow, I know this and that, and you, you know. And I think what the, the point of all this was, my overall opinion of this whole chapter was about trying to get along, understanding that we're not always gonna agree, but respect the fact that other people have opinions. And they even said in this book, sometimes those opinions kind of will have people move a little bit, you know, so we're not all stuck in this, you know, I'm not doing this because you said it, and I don't like you, and all this stuff. It's like, where can we, where can we find the commonality of goals? So I, I thought, I thought it was very interesting. That's, I couldn't believe I went through it as quick as I did. But I thought the things they were saying were, was probably something that'd be nice to have in a class for people first coming on a committee, so that you understand that. But they, they talk about having trust in one another too. As long as you can trust one another, and you don't feel like somebody's not telling you. As soon as somebody veers off and isn't honest with you, it kind of tends to destroy relationships too. So I try to keep that in mind all the time when I'm talking to people. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Sure.
Anyone else? Ms. Santos?
I almost forgot my homework assignment, because I was preparing for my classroom assignment, so. But I thought it was funny, because I was, and I agree with what you had said, as far as, one of the things that I thought of with myself, being a teacher, that it's sometimes hard not to push myself in as a teacher, especially, especially being on the curriculum subcommittee. Really, really hard, right? And I'm like, and I think when I got that, I'm like, great, I love that, because I'm a teacher. But then it's like, oh, wait. I had to screech to myself, like, I'm not having input as far as the curriculum goes. And that's my wheelhouse, right? So that was really hard for me to understand that, no, that's not my responsibility at this point, right? Like, I have to take off that teacher hat for a little bit and hear from the other teachers as well too. So I thought of that, especially that part about micromanagement. I don't think I've done that, and I hope I haven't done that, but I knew that in my head, that I had to be wary of that, right? But the other thing I was thinking of, because I read this after our conversation yesterday, and I thought that was fitting too, because it was this, even if you don't agree, that you have to have trust that each of us have that moral imperative in mind, right? So even there were some things that I didn't necessarily agree with, well, I know you have the best interest in mind, so I have to trust that, right? And even having that conversation with you, it was like, I didn't know how to start that conversation, right? So I think that showed enough that I trusted you enough to be able to be open with you about that conversation that we had. You know, and I think that's really important. And then the other thing, the so, you know, when you see things on social media that you don't agree with, that's sometimes about the school, I have to check myself, like, I can't just say it as myself anymore. I now say it as a school committee member, right? So if I see something that I disagree with, which is sometimes really hard for me to like not voice my opinion, I'm like, no, I can't do that, because then I'm speaking for everybody else, you know? And I think that's a really good thing for me to learn specifically, that I am representing everybody and that you have to be a little bit more careful of thinking about everybody as a whole, not just like it's saying, like, what constant, who do you represent, kind of thing? That you're actually representing the school committee more so than anybody else, right? If that makes sense. So those are the things that...
Great, thank you, Ms. Santos, Ms. Shoves, Mrs. Shoves.
See, goes right to the women.
I know. I, I, it's so nice, I...
I move next time that it's the men that have to come prepared for this conversation.
Well, yes, we'll second that. So I agree with both of the ladies. I found that really the underlying theme was trust. And I think as new members, it took us a while to get to know everybody on the committee. You know, because, you know, you've, you've heard people talk about different members and what their philosophies are. And like, so coming on, on here, and then working with you guys and developing a trust that I do think, when I was reading it, I thought about so many of the other school boards or school committees that don't get along. And probably the main reason why they don't get along is because they don't trust each other. And, and I have a big trust in, in who we work with, and I trust John and his leadership team. And I think that's important. We can question it. It did talk about like having differences and having discord, but once a decision has been made, that we stand behind the decision as a group. And I think that, I think we've done that very well. And, and I, I know Melissa and I have learned a lot as we, because we're the new members in here, but it's been a good learning experience, but I do think that the trust is the most important thing. I think that, that if we have the trust, then we know we're making decisions that are best for our students.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan, go ahead.
Yeah, but back to another thing, you know, we, we had an interview with people that looked at the jobs here. And at one point, it was the principal's job, and one of the people that was there, I, I had told him that that was my hometown. I, I had told him that that was my hometown where he came from. And I, I mentioned the name, the year, you know, the year that I graduated. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's the respect piece too. And he waved his hand at me, we don't teach anybody the way you learned anymore. What was that, you know? It, it's like, yeah, we all learn differently, but that's, I think, when we do things differently, sometimes we can advocate that maybe we shouldn't have thrown everything out when we, you know? I know we keep trying to make education better, but I, I feel bad that kids spend a lot of times so much time on the phones and not so much time in a book, you know? So I wish there was a little bit more emphasis on that. But I mean, that's just from the experiences that I had. And I never forgot a lot of the stuff I learned. I still remember poems from when I was a little kid, you know? So that none of that stuff really bothers me. And I think if we can respect the fact that we all, like, I, I respect the fact when we talk about math, that Mrs. Shavz was teaching math, you know? And she knew what she was doing and did a great job with it. So, um, you know, I never had you as a teacher because I'm older than you. But I mean, I, I know that my kids really learned different things from different people. And that was something else I thought was kind of implied in there that, you know, we ought to listen to other people's experiences too. And maybe we can blend some stuff together and not really be far apart on anything. But I, I really, I really did enjoy this chapter. And I'll second that motion on the gentleman next one takes time.
Chair will not entertain the motion.
I, I, that's what I thought, that's a big surprise.
Yes, superintendent, please.
So I just, again, I'm, I'm really proud of you all for engaging in the book study and for having the deep conversations. And I also just really appreciate the level of vulnerability that you are expressing because you're right, not all school committees function this way, but you guys also put in a lot of work during the retreats, before the meetings, during our subcommittees. So we are able to build those relationships and build those trusting relationships. And when things do go south or things get a little sour, we do spend time and mend the relationships because that's what a family does. So again, I just commend you all. And, you know, next October, the first meeting in October, we will cover chapter six. And I'll do a better job reminding you all. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add a comment referring back to Mrs. Shavz, what she said about other school committees probably not getting along as well as we get along. Well, I can attest to that because all school committee meetings are public and a district right down the road is always at each other's throats. And I kind of like wanted to hold back when Captain Nichols says, you know, reach out to other school committees to find out what we can learn from them. No, they can learn from us. So I'm very proud that, you know, our school committee does, does well and does the right thing, the right work for the betterment of our students' success. So thank you all for your participation, and no more comments. We'll move on to administrative business, staffing report, see enclosure. Any action on that or just receive and place on file?
Motion, receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you.
I'd just like to note that I vote present. If you can note that in the minutes, that I vote, um, present.
On the staffing report, item one?
On the staffing report.
Okay, so amend the motion to include Mrs. Santos, voting present.
There's a relative on there, so.
So I'm up.
Who's seconding that? Mrs. Shavz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Next up, we have town public school staffing update, see enclosure. Again, any action on this or?
I just want to give a quick comment. So the goal was to be at ninety percent, over ninety percent staffing to start the year. You'll see we're at ninety-two percent staffing. We have five schools that are hundred percent staffed. And I'm happy to report that all our libraries are fully staffed.
Wonderful, 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 wonderful. Uh, the Spanish position, any, any action on that yet, superintendent? I know, I, I actually spoke to another colleague in another district that was also looking for a Spanish teacher. I don't know what's going on.
I'll, I'll check tomorrow. I'm not, I'm not aware if that position has been filled yet because the staffing report was completed last week. But I'll check.
They were struggling too, so hopefully we can get a great candidate. All right, so wishes the committee on that?
Motion, receive and place on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you. Next up, we have subcommittee reports. First up, we have curriculum, August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, and we have Chair Santos.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so the curriculum subcommittee met on Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. The meeting was called to order at four. Attendance were Mrs. Donna Shavz, Mrs. Christine Fagan, Superintendent John Cabral, Mr. Chris Barata, and Dr. Elizabeth Palowski. I just want to preface this, but it was a very active conversation. Um, so I, I did my best to kind of get the nature of it all together in, out of four-page notes. So I just want to say that it was very robust conversation, I will say, um, and very informative. But the purpose specifically of the meeting was for Dr. Palowski to review the mathematics curriculum or illustrative math with the subcommittee, which was requested due to concerns, as we have discussed before. Um, a top, some Taunton High students had brought up at the student advisory meeting at the end of the last school year. Uh, the beginning of the meeting was very informational as Mr. Barata and Dr. Palowski provided us with a brief history of illustrative math, or IM as it's called, uh, including how, when, and why it was implemented. Essentially, there was a need for a baseline curriculum across the school system, and the curriculum has been used for the past four years. Um, Dr. Palowski highlighted in great detail the ins and outs of the curriculum, showcasing specific content and assignments throughout different grade levels. Uh, there were also discussions as to how to each teacher delivers the material. And Dr. Palowski emphasized not only the importance of teachers' learning to allow the students to lead the course content, but equally the importance of providing all students with high-quality education, which was one of the reasons why IM was utilized. Uh, lastly, she also emphasized the idea that IM is a conceptual curriculum and that teachers need to be more strategic in connecting the lessons to real-world problems. Uh, specific concerns, not only with IM curriculum and Open Sai Ed, which Dr. Palowski briefly reviewed, were discussed. Uh, Mrs. Fagan spoke specifically about teachers that struggled with the materials. Uh, there are, and just noted that there are scripts available through IM for teachers who may not be as familiar with certain areas, um, as attested to by Dr. Palowski and Mrs. Shavz as well. Um, and parents, some of the other issues were parents who struggle with helping their child. Um, did I just say, did I repeat myself? Okay. Um, helping their child with specific math homework, um, which I'm sure a lot of people can relate to as superintendent also pointed out though, that, you know, education is constantly evolving as well too. Uh, and one more specific issue about a long-term substitute that took over for a physical science class, which was one of the concerns raised by the students at the student advisory committee. Dr. Palowski admitted that it was an unfortunate but not regular situation. But there are concerns also echoed by Mrs. Shavz about teachers' absences and need for substitutes, and often how teachers need to cover classes, which also prevent them from using planning time efficiently. Uh, Dr. Palowski made the point that at this time, every student has experienced IM curriculum, minus the fact that graduating seniors may not have had it in eighth grade. This makes it clear that students should be somewhat adjusted to the curriculum at this point. And a question posed by Mrs. Shavz wondered if struggles were actually due to the curriculum or post-effects of COVID. Um, while comprehensive data is not available, Dr. Palowski noted the special education data shows a marked improvement for students. Also, in regards to MCAS scores with math, T, uh, town public schools was top ten out of the list for twenty-twenty-three out of urban schools. Meeting adjourned at five-eleven P.M.
Motion to accept.
Second. Thank you for the very comprehensive report.
I don't know if anybody wanted to say anything to her yet, but I was gonna, you know?
Sure, we can have it on discussion if we wish.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that she did an excellent job reporting out and that I, I make a motion that we accept your report. If any, unless somebody else wants to jump in on anything.
Seconded by Mrs. Shavz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you. Next up, we have Committee of the Whole, chaired by myself, Dr. DeMello. The Committee of the Whole met earlier this evening. All members were present. Uh, I know that Mrs. Fagan just came in a few seconds late, but she was here for the meeting. Uh, so let the record show, all members present. And the only agenda item was me to discuss the request for proposals for legal services. Superintendent Cabral reminded us of our progress since May first, how this all came to be, of getting RFPs out for legal counsel for the school committee. And to date, the leadership team has followed a grading system from a very comprehensive rubric. Then the Finance and Law Subcommittee, which consists of Mr. Veer, Mrs. Shavz, and myself, also met at the prior meeting, the last school committee meeting, I believe it was, uh, and went through the four RFPs and spent almost two hours creating the rubric also for a grading system and passed that on to administration. And now the next order of business was a motion was made to move it on to the Rules Subcommittee, which will take a look at it at the September eleventh Rules Subcommittee meeting at three-thirty P.M., I believe, superintendent. And then there was a date certain established, I believe, for September eighteenth. No, September, yeah, September eighteenth, next school committee meeting. Yep, uh, School Committee, uh, School Committee of the Whole meeting to take place on September eighteenth and evaluate all three of the rubrics that were established and make a recommendation to hire legal counsel for the school committee. And that concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you. Next up, we have the Finance and Law Subcommittee, also chaired by myself. Uh, first up, if I can just look at my notes here, we had bills payable. First item was bills payable for FY twenty-five, the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, that was voted unanimously to approve the warrant of FY twenty-five. Uh, there was very little discussion. I actually brought up a topic, but I was misreading the vendor name. I thought it was something else. And I think there was nothing else that really mattered on that. Did you have some? Oh, subscriptions. Mrs. Shavz questioned the, the dollar amounts for various subscriptions, which were just almost standard practice. And that, again, was voted unanimously by the Subcommittee. Wishes to the committee.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And the last item was the FY twenty-four bills payable, the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Once again, that was voted unanimously in favor to pay bills payable for FY twenty-four. There was no discussion on that, any wishes to the committee?
Motion to, um, accept and adopt the recommendations.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, we have new business and, uh, item one, FY twenty-five, High School Advisory Subcommittee Meeting Schedule Discussion. I think that's you, Chairman Palowski.
Uh, thank you, Dr. DeMello. So, um, yeah, we've got a pretty ambitious schedule, uh, trying to schedule quite a few high school subcommittee meetings this school year. Um, the first one is tentatively scheduled to be on the twenty-fifth of September with both the Taunton High School Advisory Council and the Taunton Alternative High School Advisory Council. Uh, as schedules permit with the different schools, we're going to have subsequent meetings with the advisory councils at the three middle schools, um, and then also meetings at the high school and tentatively the middle schools to discuss space concerns on all the buildings.
Excellent, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Palowski, what time on the twenty-fifth?
One o'clock for the, uh, Taunton High School and bear with me. I believe three-thirty for the Alternative High School. Sorry, it's amazing.
Wonderful. Mrs. Santos, sorry.
Uh, I just, just to clarify, under the upcoming meetings, it says the twenty-third. So I just wanted to make sure. So it's the twenty-fifth? Okay.
So September twenty-fifth, one P.M. for the high school and three-thirty for the Taunton Alternative High School. Mr. Veer?
So, uh, a quick question, just, uh, point information. It's just to discuss space, it's not to discuss other things or other matters going on where specifically and only discussing space, quote-unquote, space.
Sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll repeat it, um, I have in front of me. So on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, there'll be a high school subcommittee meeting of the High School Advisory Council at Taunton High School at one o'clock, and then at Taunton Alternative High School at three o'clock on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. So these meetings are the meetings with the, the school advisory council.
Okay.
There'll be future meetings that we've not yet scheduled because it'll be based on the availability of the, uh, the principals and staff. Those meetings will be focused on space concerns at each school.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you. I know Mr. Palowski sent a very aggressive schedule of meetings. Uh, I, I appreciate that. I, I think we should actually put them on calendars and see going forward. And if we need to adjust them, we adjust them. I think your recommendation is, is great because it can guide us going forward. And I know the superintendent said it could be a little bit too much because sometimes there's conflicts. But at least we have a placeholder, and if we need to adjust it, then we adjust it or we cancel, postpone it. So thank you for your recommendations. Any comments on that, Mr. Palowski?
Uh, yeah, no, th- thank you. Um, I, I think the most important thing is, I mean, the, the, the goal of these meetings is to be helpful and to be able to meet, uh, the representatives of the schools where they are, hear their concerns. So, I mean, we want to work around their schedule. You know, they're, they're busy, so we want to come to them, hear their concerns. So whatever time works for them, I know myself, Mr. Veer, Mrs. Fagan, will, you know, will make ourselves available.
Great, superintendent?
And just a quick comment, because we really don't have norms when it comes to how the subcommittees function. And maybe something we could discuss, or the subcommittees could discuss amongst themselves, and we could possibly discuss at our retreat in the twenty-ninth, but I think we should have the conversation sooner, is do we schedule the meeting once we have at least two subcommittee board members? Because I think with the schedule that Mr. Palowski is, is hoping to accomplish with five schools, to have all three members there could be very difficult. But if you have at least two or three, you have a majority. And then other school board members typically attend. I say go ahead. My recommendation, we go ahead and schedule the meeting, just so like Dr. DeMello said, we have that placeholder, we're respecting the time of our principals, uh, we're respecting time with the kids. And if something happens where a board member can't attend, at least we have two there and we hold the meeting. That's just my recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I think it's wise that we, we, you know, meet with these students during the academic year, not at the, you know, winter intercession, uh, just before winter intercession, then at the end of the school year, because it does us no good then, right? To fix problems if there are problems or to improve upon or, you know, listen to them the way we should. So thank you for that, Mr. Palowski, and I'm sure you'll speak to superintendent and share that schedule once again. Uh, any action on that or just receive and place on file? Just an update? Okay, great. Next up, we have unfinished business, action item updates, action item update, see enclosure.
Unfortunately, I don't have any updates at this time.
Do the committee members see anything here that, uh, well, we saw some photos of the food truck, so that's positive. Uh, that's really, really cool. It's gotten a lot of great reception in the public, at least through social media that I've seen. Any update on that, superintendent?
Just awaiting final inspection. Uh, I, I don't want to say that the awning at the Alternative High School is done yet because I still see a boom lift, uh, at the Alternative High School, but I think that's nearing completion. And then, uh, once the school year and Principal Harrison gets the start of the high school under his feet, we'll schedule that traffic meeting.
I, I do need to bring something up on this, uh, on this, uh, action item. And it's, uh, not, not nice to share, but I have to. Uh, the Hopewell School is a voting location, and I heard that the building is in deplorable condition. And, uh, there were complaints, um, by citizens to the mayor's office. So we need to, uh, I don't know what we need to do here, but, um, it wasn't, it wasn't good, it wasn't good for any of us, whether you're a city councillor, a school committee member, the mayor, because it was a voting poll location and there were, um, it wasn't good based on the perception of the public.
Yeah, I was concerned too because the fence in the back was open, so the whole playground.
This was more in, inside, inside.
I, I one-hundred percent agree because that's where I vote, so.
Oh, you were there, okay. So you saw, okay. Yeah, I didn't see, I just.
So I believe the appropriate action would be by the committee to refer this item to long-range planning or, uh, to schedule a Committee of the Whole meeting to have a discussion.
Well, I, I believe that, uh, we need to do this sooner than later. Uh, I think we should follow our rules and go to the long-range planning first. And then from there, we can go to Committee of the Whole. Who, who chairs long-range planning? Is that you, Mr. Veer?
Yeah.
Do you, are you okay with that, Mr. Veer?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you'll get together with your student superintendent to schedule a meeting ASAP?
Yes.
Great. That's all I have. Mr. Palowski, please?
Uh, if it pleases the committee, if this is the appropriate mo- moment, uh, I need to make a, a motion. Um, at a previous meeting, uh, Mr. Renoz had placed ahead, made a motion to schedule a meeting, uh, with representatives from the city to discuss the Two Hamilton Street, uh, school on, uh, for, for a meeting on nine-eighteen. Uh, and the, and the motion passed. I'd like to make a motion if we could reschedule that meeting to October the second due to scheduling conflicts. So again, this meeting was scheduled to be with Habib, the engineer, Chris Carmichael, the building superintendent, and Patrick Delarusso, the CFO. the building superintendent, and Patrick Delarussue, the CFO, on September eighteenth to discuss the Two Hamilton Street, and like to make a motion to move that meeting to October second, if it pleases the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Second, on discussion. I I appreciate that there is going to be another member not present, not myself. I will be present. There's another member not present at that meeting, so that means we'd have two members not present. I think the motion is appropriate. The motion has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.